Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all.
I'm sure.
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Councilmember Schwer?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Nordby?
Here.
And Mayor Mongi?
Here. Thank you so much. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight?
So moved.
So moved by Councilmember Cole?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong, all in favor? Say aye.
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 Presentations, Ramsey County Food Scrap Pilot Program. Welcome, appreciate you coming up, Victoria. How are you this evening?
I assume this is where I'm supposed to be? Okay.
You're at the?
Good evening, I'm Victoria Reinhardt, Ramsey County Commissioner. I represent District Seven on the county board, and that is all of the city of North St. Paul, all of White Bear Lake, and all of the city of Maplewood. And I'm really pleased to be here tonight. My background is actually in the environmental field, specifically in garbage, going back to the mid-eighties, actually, when the Recycling and Energy Center was put together in response to state statute mandating that no unprocessed waste go into landfills by night. With, by 1990, there would be no more unprocessed waste going in the landfill. So we see how that worked, not well, but the fact of the matter is counties are the only level of government that are actually mandated to deal with garbage across the state. And so Ramsey and Washington Counties in the early 1980s formed a partnership that is not only still in effect today, but much stronger than it was even when it began, because at that point, it was just about the facility, trying to make sure that we could get the refuse-derived fuel out of that facility. And so, I'm going to skip all of the stuff in between here, because we decided that we needed to do more in order to achieve the environmental goals, because that's what it was about. It wasn't just a mandate, it was about the environmental goals that we wanted to achieve. And that was before people were talking about climate change, or at least in any real conversation about it, but we wanted to do the right thing. And so, we formed that, this partnership. We decided then, in 20, well, and Michael and Sam can tell you for sure, but I think it was 2017, is that right?
2016.
2016, alright. We had the opportunity to figure out what we could do, and we bought the facility after much, much consideration, the Recycling and Energy Center in Newport. And so, we've got two counties wide, working together, and truly working in a partnership with nonprofits, with the businesses, and trying to really make sure that we were getting as much waste out of the landfill, out of processing even, as we possibly could, because we decided at the very beginning of that, that we were going to do more than just chop it up and send it to XL and have them burn it. That's not what we wanted to do, but that is part of the waste management hierarchy, as they call it. So, we made a, we made a commitment at that point, to make sure that we could work, and I'm not going to get into all of the details of this, because I really love this, and what we can do as a positive thing, because everybody, everybody produces garbage. And so, everybody can have an impact on what happens with that, and the effect on the environment and future generations, and that's why I'm so passionate about this area. But we said, we're gonna figure out what else we can do. And part of that was, what do you do with organics? What do you do with the recyclables that end up in the waste stream? What can you do that will reduce the carbon footprint? And that goes to anaerobic digestion, and it goes to turning it into gas, and using it for fuel. And that's what, that's the journey we're on today. And one of those things is in the organics area. And I'm going to let the real professionals on this come up and explain what we're doing, but I am so thrilled. There are four communities, a portion of the communities are entering into this organics recycling pilot project. Again, this is going to roll out to two counties wide. It's the first in the nation to do something like this. And then, I will let them explain what the process is, but it's pulling out the, the organics, and we needed to have two communities in Ramsey County, and two in Washington County, a portion of the cities. And North St. Paul has stepped up to the plate, and we have worked with your staff here to have that happen here. So you're part of the very beginning of what I think is the change in the way we deal with our garbage. So I will turn it over to Michael Reed, and you'll get the full experience of it, and we also have other folks here that can, and Sam Hall will be talking, and we can, then we can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Michael Reed with Ramsey County, and I'm Division Manager there, working with Recycling and Energy, and I'm going to turn it over to one of our professionals here. Sam Hansen, who is our Joint Activities Manager, is going to present on the program, the pilot program. And we also have Jennifer Winmore, she's with Ramsey County, and she's got a heavy involvement in this program as well. It's a collaborative effort between Ramsey, Washington staff, and also Recycling and Energy staff. We're very excited about it. I'll stop talking and turn it over to Sam Hansen.
I apologize, there are too many Sams at the program.
We do have three different Sams on staff at RNE, and two of them are Sam H., so it happens a lot. No worries.
And you can point the finger to somebody, it's easier.
We get a lot of each other's emails. So give me a second while this hopefully loads. Oh, well, look at that, that was easy. Great, so, Mr. Mayor, council members, thanks for having us today. So I'm, I'm going to keep things pretty high-level, but just give a real quick overview of what this new program is, and then what to expect as being a pilot community in the program. And Jennifer here has some of the sample bags, so if I'll have her pass it out, so you can see the bags that we're talking about, and I'll jump into some of the details. So like what was mentioned, we're here today to talk about this new residential recycling program. It's been years in the making, and we're about to launch a really small-scale pilot of the program, so I'm just going to talk a little bit about what to expect. And we're calling it the Food Scraps Pickup Program, because it'll do exactly that. It's going to give residents a really convenient way to have their food waste picked up from their home, and then have it go to a facility where it gets composted. And eventually, this will be available for every resident in both counties, Ramsey and Washington County. And how it'll work, this is a very simple diagram of how it'll work, there's a lot of things behind the scene, but basically, residents who sign up, they'll get bags delivered to their house, they use those bags, collect their food scraps, when the bag is full, they tie those bags, those are examples of what we'd be using, tie those bags up, put them into their tra, their existing trash receptacle, so their house dumpster, trash bin that's outside. The hauler that picks up their trash comes and picks that up, it eventually works its way, all the way down to the RNE facility that's down in Newport, Minnesota, that Commissioner Reinhardt said is, has been purchased by the two counties back in 2016. And there, we have a whole bunch of new equipment and processes that mechanically finds those bags, separates them out, and then those bags will get sent to commercial compost facilities, where it gets turned into valuable compost. So again, that sounds very simple, and you know, four, four circles on the screen, there's a lot more behind the scenes, but we're trying to make it as easy as possible for residents to understand how it works, and then be able to participate. And the reason that this program is possible is because of those bags, so they may look very similar to the compost bags that you may see at the store, they may feel very similar, but they've been specifically engineered to be thicker and more durable, so that they can withstand that journey in the trash hauler's truck from curbside all the way to the RNE facility. And some of this I already covered, but a few reminders, so this will be a free program for residents, it will be voluntary, so it's, it's up to residents if they want to sign up or not. And then we're trying to make it as convenient as possible, so we'll be sending those bags direct to the, to the homes. You have the 13-gallon bag that's in front of you there, we also have a smaller bag, so there are going to be some options based on how families want to collect food scraps at home. And then we're also providing, we're developing a lot of different resources, you know, print materials, website materials, FAQs, all of that, in a variety of different languages, including the customer service line, just to, again, try to make it as accessible to anybody, so if you have questions, call this number, visit the website, we have printouts and handouts, trying to, again, make sure that it's very clear what to do, and what the end goal is for this program. And so, since, as was mentioned, this will eventually be available to every resident in the two counties, over 800,000 residents. Before we jump to that, we want to start smaller. There's, this has been years in the making, and we have a lot of great talented people that have been planning all of these details, but we want to test some of those details before we open it up to the entirety of the two counties. So, we are starting here in just a couple weeks, early April, we'll be launching what we're calling a pilot. It'll include up to 2,200 eligible households in the four communities that are listed here, and the star on the map represents roughly where those areas are, and I'll show where North St. Paul is in, in a minute. Again, trying to focus in some really targeted areas, to test some of the resources that we've developed, make sure that we have all of, all the bugs worked out, and then, as we make changes and improve, then start to roll it out to more and more residents, more communities around the two counties. And specifically for North St. Paul, the area in green on this map represents the area where it'll be available, so just kind of across the street here, between Century and Seventh Avenue, and the bottom border is Second Avenue, if you can read that tiny print. So this area has about 455 eligible households, and it's a good mix of single-family home, multi-unit buildings, because we want to test a lot of different factors, and make sure, again, this is available and accessible to anybody, regardless of your housing situation. And we're going to be rolling it out there, starting in a couple weeks, and then also doing a lot of engagement work with the families, the individuals that sign up to be a part of the program, to understand what's working, what's not, so that we can then iterate and improve and advance the program as we launch it to other areas. And how, how are we going to do this? Since it is voluntary, it's, it's going to be available to anybody that's in that area, but we don't expect everybody to sign up right away, so we're going to be doing some really focused outreach, including, you know, mailers, some welcome packets, we're going to do some very targeted social ads, and then we're working with the recycling coordinator here, and with haulers, to continue to provide those messages to residents that are in that specific area. And then, as we go, we'll also be doing a lot of engagement and education, so focus groups, information sessions, again, trying to help inform how the program works, but then also get input from those that are participating, so that we can find ways to make improvements. And this will all happen, starting in just a couple weeks, but want to show kind of the timeline for this pilot, so beginning in a couple weeks, really start that outreach and engagement work with residents, recruit people that want to sign up and participate in the pilot. That outreach will continue for the next few months, through June at least, but then starting in June, and kind of through summer, we'll be starting that engagement work, collecting input, gathering feedback from those that are participating. And then, starting late summer, so around August and into September, start to make some of those changes, improvements, all with the goal that by end of September, early October, we'll start to be able to expand to other communities, starting with the pilot community, so expanding out to more of North St. Paul, and then adding additional communities beyond that. And then from there, we're planning a, and this says, "All dates are approximate and subject to change," because we don't know what we don't know. This is, hopefully, this timeline follows just as planned, and then if it does, we'll continue to kind of do that same process, launch in more communities, including more areas here in North St. Paul, learn more, keep tweaking, and eventually, over the course of the next two to three years, hopefully, we'll have it available to every resident in the two counties. But want to walk a little bit before we run, of course. So, that was very high-level, very quick, but I wanted to kind of share what to expect, and if you have any questions, we're happy to answer.
Questions? I think the only one that's going to be in that, is going to be you, Norby.
Yeah, I'm excited, I'm in, in the pilot area, so I look forward to this. To me, this is a wonderful opportunity for all of our residents, and I can't wait till it expands, and I look forward to being part of your guinea pigs.
Excellent. You're our ambassador.
Absolutely.
I think you should move to First Avenue East, and then I can participate, so. I know it's not about me, but let's make it. I think this is great, thank you so much for showing up and bringing this to our attention, and I think this is really exciting for the community, I'm really excited about it, so thank you.
Of course.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation, and thank you Commissioner Reinhardt for being here as well. One question I do have is, kind of, what are the, what is the scope of organics? Sometimes when you do your home organics, it's very different than a institutionalized way of managing it, so does that include bones and all those other things? Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, yes, so if you're familiar, maybe the easiest way to think about it is if you're familiar with the drop-off sites that exist around Ramsey County, anything that's accepted there should be acceptable in this program, too. We'll be sending these food scrap bags to commercial compost facilities, so anything that is plant or animal-based, so bones, meat products, dairy, any food, vegetable scraps, trimmings, cuttings like that. And we're calling it the Food Scrap Pickup Program specifically, because this is a new concept for a lot of people, so trying to focus on the food items, but other certified compostable items, like your paper towel, or things like that, will also be acceptable. And we'll have a full list of what's acceptable and what's not, and all of the materials as we roll out to communities.
You said the food scraps are going to be sent to commercial composters, are, do you have it worked out where you're going to be able to, the Ramsey County and possibly Washington County sites, where the residents can go to compost, to supply those areas?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, or council member, that's a great question. We've, we've been, over the last few years, we've been working on some kind of compost market development strategies, to raise awareness on the value of that finished compost, and we intend to continue doing that, especially as we're starting to send more of that material to those facilities, trying to bring it back and show how it can be useful in community gardens, backyard gardens, so we've been doing some distribution over the last few years, especially to community gardeners, and I think that there's a ton of opportunity to expand beyond that as well.
Is there a minimum number of households you're trying to recruit? I said, saw 455, but is there a goal?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, council member, the goal overall for the pilot is up to that 2,200 total, so that'll be across the four pilot areas. If we can hit that, that'll be great, we'll see, you know, as we start to communicate and do some of that outreach, what kind of interests we see, but I think if 455 households in North St. Paul are excited and sign up right away, then we'll take them.
Do they also get a tour of the RNE Center?
Absolutely, yeah. Mr. Mayor, council member, we, we are excited to have more and more tours, and we would welcome any, we welcome the council, we'd welcome residents. Now on the RNE website, there's actually a page for tours, and you can request, even if you're just an individual resident, and not a part of a group, if you want to come see the, the facility, you can fill out a really simple form, and we'll follow up and find a date to have you come out and check out all of the interesting equipment we have.
Thank you.
This is, this is fantastic, thank you very much for sharing. It's been made to be very simple, and I think simple work, so. Question is, the defined area within North St. Paul, is that defined because that's a specific route of a truck for collection? So you can't, the enthusiasm is here, I mean, you can hear it. So, I don't live in that, in that grid, so I can have this biffy bag, and I've put it in my waste, it's not going to get to the right, okay.
Correct, yeah. Mr. Mayor, council member, so there's a lot of factors that went into selecting these pilot communities, but one of them is based in the hauler that services that area, and then where they take the waste. So, that community is serviced by a hauler, or haulers, that will take the waste directly to the RNE Center in Newport, as opposed to going to like a transfer station. So all four of the communities have that same feature, because starting that way is a lot easier to coordinate and test some of these features. Once things go to the transfer station, it gets a little bit more complicated, so that, the transportation, transfer station piece will be in a future phase, after we test some of these strategies first.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, the team, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam Hansen. I just wanted to say that the tours are pretty cool, so if you want to, we can certainly arrange, if you want to do it as a city council, and invite other folks to it. The robotics that are pulling out, not only, we have an organics line that will be utilized for this purpose, but also, we have a robotics line to pick out the recyclables that I'm sure everybody wanted to recycle on their own, but didn't. And so we're really moving things forward in a very positive way. But if you want a tour, just let me know, I'd be happy to go with.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Consent agenda, does anybody want to talk about anything specific? We don't read it off, Brian?
Certainly can. Thank you, Mayor. So on the consent, item A, March 7th, 2023 workshop minutes. Item B, March 7th, 2023 regular meeting minutes. Item C, general claims of $1,186,692.68. Item D, HRA claims of $20,834.86. Item E, Ramsey County Library and North St. Paul Use of Fiber Capacity Agreement. Item F, North St. Paul Police Department, JPA and Court Service Amendment Renewal. Item G, special event, North St. Paul Friday Night Cruise, June 2nd through September 15th, 2023. Item H, charitable gambling permit, North Metro Flex Academy located at 2350 Helen Street North, May 12th, 2023. Item I, resolution accepting donations for February of 2023. Item J, building permit report, February 2023. Item K, resolution authorizing submission of an application to the Outdoor Recreation Grant Program for Housie Park Improvements. Item L, MCES II Grant Program Agreement Resolution, and Item M, 2022 Delegate Contract Process Agreement with State of Minnesota.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Second. Schwers? All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Mayor, Council, John Schmall, 2750 Chisholm Avenue, North St. Paul, the subject is inspections. Thursday, prior to the last Thursday, knock on the door, person says, "I'm here to inspect your furnace, and I had a furnace put in, in December of '21, 15 months ago." And the individual standing in front of me, first of all, if you asked any residents of North St. Paul, whether, you know, the inspections were done by a contractor, or the city, or who was the contractor, if in fact there was a contractor, I'd say 99% of the people would say, huh? Anyway, I can't, I wouldn't say that, because I've been at these meetings, listening all the time, and I'm looking for something that says "Menspec" on this individual. He's standing in front of me, has the required layer, thing around the neck with a hook on it, and the card that says "SAFE," S-A-F-E. So I said to him, "Safe, what's that?" And he said, "Oh, oh, we bought Menspec." So I don't know how you're to tell individuals, residents, who will be inspecting, but it would be nice if there was a source, and that the source be something that has the actual company. And I, I said, "Safe, are you, did you, would, we bought out Menspec." "Oh, okay, Menspec's gone?" "Oh, no, they still exist, so, you know, what's going on?" Hard to understand, I said, "Come on in," so. And in talking to him, as we went through this, I said, "You never find anything wrong?" And he says, "Oh, that's not true." Told a story of a situation of a home, they had a new furnace put in, the home was sold, very close to the installation, and the, when they got to the point of inspecting it, the inspection had the, found a real major problem. And I said, "Well, the homeowner probably, they didn't have an inspection prior to purchasing it." And he said, "No, wrong, they did have an inspection prior to purchasing it." And it was a situation where in your new furnace, you have the pipe that comes out, and it's supposed to come out this way, so it exhausts the air. Well, the one they put in was like this, he said, and it was going up, which meant that the condensation didn't go out, and it was going back into the furnace. So, just a story, that these inspections are important, and to be done quickly, maybe. And again, when you're looking at someone who says, "I want to come in your house and inspect something," there should be, I should have some knowledge that knows who that person's going to be.
Welcome.
Mayor, City Council, everybody's new, except, I guess, Brian, I've known for many years here. I did have somebody I knew very well, Victoria Reinhardt, behind me, she knows what I'm all about and that. Question I'd have to ask the council, have you, have some of you been into my building, or some of your children, or grandkids? Okay, so you have an idea what goes on there.
I think I still have tokens at the House.
Do you? Yeah, well, people do, it's funny, because you go through them, and I have to replenish them a lot, because it's funny that people would not bring them back, you know? Can I pass something out, is that okay?
Thanks, Dennis.
Thank you much.
Get in front of the mic. This is just something I had put together, it was kind of a last-minute thing, but it's something I've never, I've never really talked about, or flaunted, or anything wanted, but I think it's important for you people to know where this started, 1993. I was an executive in transportation for many years, so this was not what I did for a living. This was something I thought of, you know, maybe to do in later years, and in retirement. And it's been a godsend for me, and I think it's been for this community and the surrounding ones, and I'll give you a little history. In 83, when we did this, I went to the city with the idea, as you can see, I gifted this building. And the reason was, I knew financially, because I had a background on that, that you feasibly couldn't make this thing work at the prices that you charge. Right now, in the Twin Cities area, and I'm talking from Chanhassen over to all of Western Wisconsin, there is one batting cage, and that's Triple Crown batting cages. And I should say, there is one in St. Paul in the middle, but it's not, not really a, you know, big-time batting cage. So we are, we've been ranked number one for all thirty years. We even were ranked, Chicago Tribune ranked us as the upper Midwest regional one years back, which shocked me. But the building they gifted, you can see the concession bill, and I put the money to build that too, back then. The sound system for the high school legion team, we put a lot of time and effort in it, with people volunteering, and they didn't have a sound system at the time, and I said, "You can't, you can't have a field without a sound system." We took care of that. I worked with Steve Roe back then, to get the T-ball shirts for all the kids every year, as long as they were in existence. The food shelf, and you'll see pictures on the back of what we've donated to the food shelf over the years, seventeen thousand, five hundred pounds, and we hope to hit the eighteen thousand pound mark this year. The last picture you'll see is, and I'm sorry, it's, everything's kind of green, it was my printer, but those are just thank you letters that I get from churches, organizations, charities, families that are suffering. I can say on this, in thirty years, I've never turned down one request, and I never would, to this day. So I try to put a lot back into the community, because that's what it's, that's what it's about. You know, I found out about the toy shelf, Norma Worm has been a friend of mine, I got down there to see that, that thing is beautiful. And next day, I sent her a check, and said, "Do what you need with this." Gift cards, I've been big on that over the holidays, do that anonymously. One I always do is that veterans home that we built across from the Veterans Park, you know, for the, I think it's for the veterans who don't have a place to go, I always put one in the mailbox. And just say, from one military family to another, because I have a history of United States Rangers, Derby Rangers. My son-in-law is a Special Ops Ranger right now, he's been in twenty years, so he's done some wonderful things. But going back with this, you know, this has been a godsend, I think. Right now, I ask people where they come from, when they come in, if they're new especially. I've had people tell me they come from Mauna, Chanhassen, Maple Grove. I get Western Wisconsin a lot now, Hudson, the Richmond, Osceola, Prescott, they're coming over, Eau Claire. I've had a family come down from Duluth one day on a Saturday, spent about five hours here, and had to go somewhere for lunch, and I always tell the people the same thing, "Head for Max." Or you got a pizza place you can go to, but I think Max has been a real plus thing for this community, that we've had that, so I've been able to push some business there. Over the years, and all the people, and the kids that I've seen especially, what I'll say about this, the kids that come in that door, and the families, I hear, "Yes, sir, no, sir, thank you, please." They're the nicest young people, and it's what America should be about. And I think you know what I'm talking about, because it's, it's all different. But it comes from the parents that bring them in, they're all, these kids are involved in sports, they have, you know, peers that they hang with, and it's fun to be around them. I spend a lot of time there, and visit with the families and that. And I've seen kids go on with scholarships, you know, and I've taught some of them, but I forget some that come back. One is a nuclear physicist out of the U of M, she was a valedictorian in her class. I've had doctors, dentists, lawyers, you name it, it's been just a treat to see these people come back. And what do they say to you, at my age is, "Yeah, I'm bringing my kid here now." And one guy had said, "And my grandkids are here now, too." So it's really a nice thing to see. You know, we have this lease coming up here, and back when we did this, and on the first city council, when I was there, Bill Sandberg was mayor, some of the names are on there, Leon Lilly, Betty McCollum, a congresswoman in Washington, Chuck Wiegert was involved somewhat, Victoria Reinhardt has worked with me over the years. These are the people that helped me jump there, and I told them the day I opened them doors, I said, "I'll promise you one thing, the city of North St. Paul will never pay one penny on this building." And to this day, they never have. All repairs are done by me. Last year, I put in twenty thousand dollars to upgrade the ramp for the handicap, you know, a lot of stones, the guardrails and that, so, which, you know, it's part of business. So Brian mentioned, a new roof was put on this year, due to hail damage, so that's brand new. So we've got, you know, good things going. That's where that money goes, you know, I keep putting that back in, in the community as much as I can, so. What I'm asking is for us to continue on, we've done this fifteen, ten, five. And I would ask that, if we can keep this going, I'd like to go for another five. I don't know where I'll be in five years, we'll talk about it as we go, but I would hope down the road, the business, you know, belongs to me, that I would find somebody, maybe who would take this, who is a local, and continue this tradition, because it affects so many people. It's, it's, it's really touches me to see what we've done. And every week, I get people that shake my hand, I get people that hug me, thank me that we're there, because they would have nowhere to go. There's training centers they can go to, but they're so expensive that you can't afford to do, especially if you've got more than one kid, it's tough. So we try to, you know, take care of that. Over the years, excessive, you want to talk to sports, all these communities around here, from Otamia to Stillwater, to Woodbury, to Tarten, North St. Paul themselves, have all seen teams go to the state tournaments, Stillwater's won one, Woodbury, North St. Paul won a couple of girls, a couple of girls that pitched for them were the Barling Girls, Denise and Sue. It's just funny that their nephews right now are pitching for the Milwaukee Brewers and the Minnesota Twins, and they grew up in my cages, and I'm so pleased to say that, I have pictures of both of them, autographs, jerseys, and they're, they're wonderful kids. So, and I've had a lot of people come through my door, Jack Moore spent two days with me doing a promo. And the Quillen Boys from Hill Murray, Tommy and Rob, thirty, twenty years in the majors between them, so. I've seen a lot of people over there, Jerry Bell, you know, Tom Kelly, you know, they've been, they've been into seeing them, they're quality people, so. And it's just been, it's been a wonderful thing. That small area that we take up outside that old field fence, it's not a very big area, but the impact it has for the Twin Cities area is huge. I would hope you would consider to keep this thing moving on, that's what I'm asking for, so. I'm here to, you know, make sure it happens, so you can believe that, and you can trust that, so. It's always been there. Is there anything I can answer for you, I certainly will.
How's it been for the, with the fields not having as much, with the North St. Paul kids not having the program anymore? Has it been affecting your business as far as the people come, number of people coming in?
You know, it's sad, because right now, it's, it's pay-for-play. The city of St. Paul had the Bill Peterson, who's a personal friend of mine, Frank White, Bill Peterson, if you know him, coached Creed for years, he's an institution, Paul Molliter, Dave Winfield are his people. His field over there is beautiful, that program is done this year, they don't have kids to play. And part of it is, the costs are just, they can't do it. You know, as far as the fields, where we're at, once they're outside, you know, things slow down for me then, but there's always places where they have to come in and use the cages, so, not, not too much, you know, where the baseball fields are. And it's funny, a lot of baseball players don't come in before, because they, they take bad practices, teams, but the fields definitely are a plus. I'm the only one to ever pull one out of ballpark before. So people, before they play, will come in and take a few swings, you know? And I get to know, one of the big leagues, and big, a lot of people that come in, and this is kind of interesting, plays up at Goodrich, and it's the sober league, they call themselves, they're recovering alcoholics and addicts. They come in, and they're the most wonderful people. And to see them be involved in this is really a, really a godsend, so it's fun to see that. And the kids in the area that are playing ball, they go to other places, they go to Tarten, they go, you know, they can go to other ones. I think Maplewood absorbed a lot of them. And, you know, we do what we can to encourage kids, and so we see that a lot of programs are strong, but a lot of them have dipped over the years, but a lot of that's cost, just plain cost.
Staff that work with you during the summer, how do you get your?
Yeah, I do, you know, the kids that work, I put in a lot of the hours. The kids that work for me are high school kids, they can be ballplayers, and every one of them knows that it's the only job in the world where you can tell your boss when you feel like working. You know, I work around their schedules, they don't work around mine. If they've got, you know, I got Eagle Scout, one kid, you know, other ones play ball, other ones, their swimming track, whatever. We work with them, and they don't work more than five hours a week, maybe ten, during the summer. Right now, hardly any, you know, I got one kid working tonight, so he hadn't worked for two months, but, and they're good kids. I always, I always find good people there, so. And usually, the kids that walk through the door, and you know right away that they're good, so.
Thank you for your presentation.
Okay, guys, well, I hope we, hope something can be resolved, we can continue this, because...
It's coming up, I'm glad we had a chance to talk about it, and we're looking at the whole McKnight Field, you know, the complex, just to see where everything is, and our boys played up there, you know, hitting the ball, so we appreciate your dedication to the...
Yeah, well, I, and I appreciate the time you spent, and I'll say this, just to finish, Triple Crown is, is not only North St. Paul, it's a destination for North St. Paul, it's putting North St. Paul out there, because people would even say, "Where are you at?" And when I tell them, they're like, "Oh, North St. Paul," and now people know it. And part of it is, it's Triple Crown, that's where they go. If you know the batting cages, they'll point to that corner, so that's good.
I appreciate this information, how you laid it out, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate your time.
You bet, thanks, guys.
Close the meeting to the public. Now, the next is, is going to have, Sue, you're going to, we're going to do the proof referendum, do we should speak first, or you're going to read it first?
I'll read it first.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. So the item that we have on the City Business Action Items tonight is a memorandum of understanding between the City of North St. Paul and the Historical Society. So the Historical Society works to promote an awareness of North St. Paul's history of residents and visitors through education, interpretation, presentations, and preservation. The Historical Society is responsible for operating, maintaining a museum devoted to collecting, preserving, and exhibiting historical artifacts for the City of North St. Paul. They're located at 2666 Seventh Avenue East here in North St. Paul. The city is authorized by state statute, including Minnesota State Statutes 471.93 and 138.053, to appropriate public funds to or on behalf of the Historical Society to collect, preserve, and exhibit data and material pertaining to the history of the city, and for general promotion of Historical Society's work. So what we are looking for, the purpose of the MOU is to establish a mutual understanding of the nature of the extent of financial support the city has traditionally, and will continue to provide to the Historical Society, subject to annual budgetary review and possible modification by the city council. Either party may terminate this relationship and memorandum of understanding at any time, with or without cause, upon written notification to the other party. Obligations of this Historical Society, as consideration for the funding provided herein, the Historical Society will continue to operate and maintain its museum, providing programs and educational materials relevant to North St. Paul history. Funding and support from the city, as consideration for the satisfactory performance of the Historical Society's mission and obligations, the city is looking to provide three thousand dollars per year for the Historical Society for support of its operations and activities. City will pay electric, water, and sewer utility bills for the museum, with periodic mowing at the museum in the summertime. They do flag replacement, Public Works does, as needed at the museum, and maintain and repair the sprinkler system down there as well. These added up together probably come to somewhere to eight, maybe nine thousand dollars a year is what the cost is. But, so this is a memorandum of understanding to be executed through your guys' support.
Mr. Mayor, one thing I'd add is, this is, the city has been providing many of these services already, and so one of the things that Brian's been working on that, as the lawyer, I appreciate, is kind of cleaning up some things, making sure that the things we're doing when we show support, and that we're authorized to do, we're memorializing these things, and it's more of a conscious effort, if you will. So when we're asked, "What are we doing, what are we providing, how much does that actually cost the city?", some of these specifics are actually being memorialized in these memorandum of understandings, so that it's clear that, one, yes, we can do this, and two, here's how much it's costing us, and yes, it was purposeful. So this is something that's been going on, I won't necessarily call this cleanup, but in some respects it is, to make sure that it's put in front of you, conscious decision with just a lot more clarity in terms of our relationship with them. So that is kind of part of the intent tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, because, you know, it's a great relationship, and it should be out there, so we all understand, so everybody realizes what it is, and the Historical Society's near, dear to my heart, just because of North St. Paul's rich history and everything that provides with wealth of knowledge with Sue Springborn, and Paul Anderson, and just the hard work that the whole team does, and I'm glad we were able to support them and be able to continue on with our rich history. Any questions, or do we want to bring that to a motion?
I fully support everything here, and Brian, thank you for rereading it, because when I read it the first time, I didn't see the clause that it can be terminated by either party at any given time. As we've sat through the last hour and a half or so, we have a lot of non-ending programs, so that was the only boundary that I wanted to make a recommendation that we add to it, but it's already in there, and I'm glad I listened to you when you read it, so I'm good to go.
Just a point of clarity, because I don't know, does the Historical Society go to Henry, or is that a little park there in that triangle, that the, the military weapons on?
Come on up. Why did you come up anyways, and you said no to me, so now you have to come up.
come up.
Paul Anderson says that we own that, that the Historical Society owns that site. When I became president a few years ago, oh, by the way, I should say, I'm Sue Springborn, 25, 73, 13th Avenue, North St. Paul. When I became president, I was not knowing anything about anything. And the leaders that we had had, except for Paul Anderson passed away. And so I'm going through these drawers one day, and I had noticed that the flags were getting really ratty looking. And I thought, what the heck here? Who does this? Well, then you find all kinds of agreements from 30 years ago, but nothing recent. So that park was, that actually was memorial, Veterans Memorial. And there is a plaque there that said it is, says it is the Veterans Memorial. And I have found paperwork that the Historical Society, the Legion, and the VFW cooperated to put that up. But if you talk to the other two entities, they don't know anything about it. So I have no idea. We're maintaining that and, well, the city cuts the grass. And we have had members that went out and do things with the weeds. And now the city for sure is doing the flags. But it's kind of an up in the air kind of thing. I, that's one of, right now, we have a person, Elaine Exted, and her mother was Priscilla Olson, who was one of the founding members of the Historical Society. And she's determined to get all this stuff organized. And she's doing a great job. So I'm hoping that we'll find something. I believe that property belongs to the Historical Society. But does that mean the cannon belongs to us? I don't know. Those things are up in the air. Did I answer your question? That we don't know.
Absolutely. Um, one of the reasons why I was wondering is, um, I was, if it was a city's or, or yours, I was wondering if it's part of this memorandum of understanding, along with all the other parks that we do, if we would want to put a trash container at that particular park because there isn't one, that we would maintain.
Wonderful. Because right now I'm the cleaner-upper. And there's a fair amount of it in the summer.
That's not a problem. And do you guys have trash cans outside of the door?
No.
You don't?
We don't.
And so sometimes they take away from, you know, the beauty of, of the park.
Aesthetically.
Yeah. So we can work together of what makes more sense for you and a good placement for it.
That would be nice. That would be nice. Because people do sit there and, yeah. And I will tell you that, uh, the History Cruisers donated $2,000 to us for our new sign. We're gonna have a new sign. It's gonna look, you might not even notice because it's gonna look just like it does now, except it's gonna be nice and new. So. Do you have any questions for me about?
Yeah, I have a question. Thank you for, for being here. And I was just wondering, how many people are you getting through the door every year?
Well, I wish I had counted because it's, it's, one day, one weekend, you'll get 15. Then the next two weeks, you, we get nobody. But then you have the holiday hop, which this year we only had 55 for some reason. Last year, we had way over 100. So it, it varies. And the, we do have people that keep the museum open during the car show. And that's kind of funny because one night, again, they'll get 10, and then they'll get nobody. So it's, and we just had a meeting at the Historical Society with a group called the Ramsey County Historical Network. And it's, uh, it's nothing formal or legal. There's no minutes. There's nothing like that. It's people from Minnesota Historical Society, Ramsey County Historical Society, White Bear, Shoreview, New Brighton, North St. Paul, just, uh, there was 21 people there. And we just sit around and talk about our problems or our wonderful things that have happened and, and what we're doing. And it's so interesting because everybody's in a different place. Some people get a lot of support from their city, but a good share of them get in-kind support, which is almost better in, in some ways than the money because there's kind of no end on it. So it's, it's variable. But I'm gonna tell you now that I'm standing here, that on the 28th, we're gonna put on kind of a fun program. Two years ago, the Lilly family called us and asked us if we wanted these old bound newspapers, North St. Paul Review. And Paul Stallman, or Joe Stallman and I went over and we're not gonna take them. We don't have room. We're not gonna take them. And we looked at them. We thought, we gotta have them. So we took them. Well, then, a few months ago, I got a phone call from Terry Furlong and the owner of the Lilly Building, the new owner, had contacted him. There was a whole room in that basement, probably this whole size, full of shelves, full of bound volumes from, they weren't all real old, but from every municipality around that, that the Lilly newspaper published. So the last two months, I've been going in that building periodically with different people. And we pretty much got it cleaned out. But it's been very interesting. So on the 28th, Paul Anderson is gonna do a little presentation about the newspapers in North St. Paul, the Sentinel, the Courier, and the Ramsey County Review. And then we are going to have artifacts, and a lot of it truly would be called artifacts, and bound newspapers sitting on tables. And people can just look at everything. It's really great fun. And we do have people that come in just to look at, because we've got the newspapers from the 1800s. And you can go to the Minnesota Historical Society. Most of those are on microfiche. But it's kind of fun to actually touch the newspapers, even though they're crumbling. It is very interesting. So.
It's the 28th of this month.
The 28th, at 7 o'clock. And cookies and coffee will be served. So. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much and your, and your group for everything you do.
Thank you.
Greatly appreciated.
Thanks a lot.
Can I move for a motion?
I move.
All right. Councilmember Wong, second. Second Councilmember, Councilmember Swears. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Next. You, you again.
Thank you, Mayor. Reports from city manager and departments. So we had a staff meeting today. The fire department's doing some code compliance cleanup, which is really good, taking care of some issues that have been around for a while. They're also gonna be doing live burn training at the training center here shortly, as well as doing some ice rescue out on Silver Lakes. So it was kind of neat. Last year, I think they got a couple of airboats out there from, or one anyway, from Ramsey County that was out there, participated in the training. Electric Department's been doing ongoing maintenance throughout the winter, as well as tree trimming. Unfortunately, we've been having some issues lately. There's been a lot of wire theft, probably over $20,000 worth of it. We're, I think we're narrowing in on who might be responsible for that. So more to come. It's really unfortunate. Finance, it's got through their audit. They did a great job as always. And they have their new accountant that will be starting on April 10th. Looking forward to her coming. She's got a lot of good experience behind her. Public Works has been a little busy with snow. But they've also been doing interviews, or they will be doing some interviews. They had 22 applications, and they will be interviewing six people for that position. So good luck to them. They've had, to date, four water main breaks. Normally, they have about eight this time of year. So, which is good because they've been kind of busy with snow. And also, they will be doing some sewer cleaning, which will be the avenues in the area south of Highway 36. We have a contractor coming in to start that. We'll have more information on the website, of course, about that as well. PD, they've been, they're hiring an officer. They're in the process of interviews and zeroing in on who they like. So it looks like they have a couple of good candidates, which is great. Community development, Brandy's been a great asset to the city in the short time she's been here. They're, she's working on grants. They're doing a lot of cleanups and finalization of older projects that have been hanging around. And of course, processing permits as well. And that is the extent of my report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Reports from council commissions and committees. Councilmember Norby, do you have anything?
No. The planning commission will be in about a week and, week and a half. I'm looking forward to that one. And also, I'd like to say, the city workers have been working around my property. And I'd like just to extend my heartfelt thanks about how wonderful they do and how professional they are. I, I think all the residents are here really blessed with how good a people we have working for us. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Wong?
In regards to the committees, the Arts and Culture Committee met on the 8th. And they're working really hard. They have several subgroups. And so I believe they'll be launching their first project here before, probably July, June, July. So I'm really looking forward to it and wondering what y'all think. But yes, very, very productive group. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
We have a meeting tomorrow, and I don't have any updates until the, the next time we all meet.
All right.
So there you go.
We have a great meeting tomorrow.
And again, kudos to all of our Public Works. This, this snow, clearly we are not ending winter in Minnesota yet. So.
Councilmember Cole?
I have nothing at this time.
All right. Do we, do we talk about the EDA the last time? Or was it?
But if there's any topics from EDA you'd like to...
No, I couldn't remember. We discussed it.
There wasn't a, there wasn't a whole lot of memorable, I mean, other than reviewing old of, of information.
I couldn't remember if we talked about something. So I have nothing that way. General business. General business on, how about you, Councilmember Norby?
Not at this time.
Councilmember Wong?
Yeah, I meant to say this in the last update, but the arts and the painting night is happening on this Monday, I think. Thursday. Thank you, Carrie. So that's been dropped down to $10, too. We just really want people to come in and enjoy themselves. And you just really, you'll be guided by Lisa Ritchie. And so we're really looking forward to having a lot of fun. And it'll be at Casey Lake. So, be good night.
Anything from you?
Nothing more at this time.
Thank you. On myself, I was able to go with, to do a, do a tour of the park with, so I always want to say Phil, but Public Works. Ron? Ron, thank you. Ron and I had a good, a good view of that facility. And we looked around and was able to understand a little better. So I appreciate that. Also, I met with our, Brian and I met with our Christine, our superintendent at the schools last Friday. So we had a good meeting. It was a couple hours, I think, by the time we were done. So we're looking at understanding the, as far as the, the police involvement with, with North and the, all the, and the schools. And where we're at is looking at that and with the field. So we're kind of, that was part of this whole comprehensive view of the, of the McKnight complex and the schools, as far as looking at the, the safety and understanding where they're at with the police. We have one full-time up at North right now to just understand the school needs and the community needs for the children as well and the students we have there. And she also mentioned the addition's gonna be done in the end of summer. So next year at, they're going to be in the one building. You're not gonna have to go back to the, the building that they're in for administrative. So they'll all be in one building all the time. So that's gonna help, she said, as well, being able to have everybody in the one building. So that's all I have. So I'll call for adjournment if there's nothing else. I did it this time. I didn't adjourn without asking, didn't I? So don't leave me hanging.
So moved.
Thank you. Councilmember Cole?
Second.
Second Councilmember Swears. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, everyone.